Good afternoon. Welcome to the, excuse me, welcome to the September 5, 2023 Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works. Council members in attendance include council members Fields, Kritzer, Forsyth, Carson, myself, and online we have council member Khan. I will announce additional council members as they arrive. Today, we have six items on our agenda, and we are going to go ahead and move, switch items two and one for today. So the first item we will address is item number two, approval of the National League of Cities Advancing Economic Mobility Grant in the amount of $15,000. And we have with us Economic Development Manager Philly Marsh. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, Council, and welcome back. The title of this agenda item is "Approval of the National League of Cities Advancing Economic Mobility Grant in the Amount of $15,000." This is an exciting opportunity to help fund a catalyzing project to support our diverse small businesses. The grant will be matched with economic development professional services funding to hire a consultant to facilitate and work with a coalition of partners to maximize the opportunity for developing a multicultural eastside small business hub in the Bellwether Housing Overlake Village Light Rail Station Transit-Oriented Development. The space will provide nearly 10,000 square feet for partners to build on existing collaborative work supporting small business owners. The coalition includes Indian American Community Services, or IACS, One Eastside Spark, Eastside for All, and many other community-based organizations working with diverse businesses in Redmond. The scope of work for a consultant includes working with a coalition of partners to determine the right mix of programming that maximizes meeting the needs of diverse small businesses, as well as developing a financial and organizational model to operate the space. We are excited about this catalyzing effort to provide welcoming, equitable, and trusted business assistance to diverse entrepreneurs and small business owners in Redmond and the region. Redmond was one of eight cities across the nation awarded this grant and will present the project at the National League of Cities Summit in November. The time constraints on this grant are to have a consultant study wrapped by December 15, and so we are requesting direction to place this grant acceptance on the September 19 consent agenda. And with that, I open it up for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Marsh. Are there questions? Council President Forsyth?
Thank you. I wasn't quite clear if the money was just for the consultant part of it, or if there was money that would be landing directly in the hands of community.
It will be for the consultant scope. Part of that scope may have partnering with some of the community-based organizations to help support their outreach. Yeah.
And we have been joined by Councilmember Anderson. Are there other questions for Ms. Marsh? It doesn't look like it. Thank you so much. I will just add my enthusiasm for this item, and I'm really excited to see this coming to one of our neighborhoods that's going to be benefiting from a light rail station in just a matter of months. So very excited. Thank you. Wonderful. We'll go back to item number one, which is "Approval of Safe Streets for All Action Plan Grant," CM 23-436, and "Approval of the PSRC Sub-Award Agreement." This is also under consideration for the September 19 consent agenda, and today we have Vanji Garcia, Josh Mueller, and Francesca Lidbury to introduce this item. Thanks.
Hello. Good evening, Council. This is the approval of the sub-award agreement with the Puget Sound Regional Council, and we have Josh Mueller and Francesca Libardi. Last year, if you remember, the city applied for the action plan grant under the Safe Streets for All SS4A grant opportunity, and was asked to consolidate with other jurisdictions within the same general region, PSRC, Pierce County, Burien, Everett, Kent, and Tecuhila. PSRC is the lead agency, and as a lead agency, they have the agreement with FHWA. The sub-award agreement is with PSRC, which enables the city to move forward on our safety action plan. We have, we put together, because sometimes it's going to be a little confusing in the next couple of weeks, so we thought it would be easier to provide a little graphic that we put together today. And the grant funding available to the city is $160,000 with a local match of $40,000. The funding will be used for the development of our action plan that includes public outreach efforts that will build on our local road safety plan that we've already talked about. Staff is requesting that this item be added to the September 19 council business meeting on the consent agenda. And we've also started the request for a qualifications process for the consultant agreement, so that's why we're having in front of you today the graphic. So do you have any questions?
Thank you, Vanji. Any questions from the Council? I'll go ahead and jump in with a question. A lot of us serve on various regional boards and committees around the region. We've certainly heard PSRC be so excited about this product, and we have, of course, spoken up when we've had our opportunities to say how proud of Redmond we are for taking a lead on this. Is there anything that we should know about the partnership with PSRC and whether that has benefited or changed, or been a change of schedule, or anything to you all that we should know about when we are in those gatherings?
Not in the gatherings. We're just under the gun to get started. We're very, we are very well aware that we all want to get started on the work. That's why we came prepared to answer any questions, because the consultant agreement is going to be in the following council meetings.
Councilmember Anderson.
On the report that includes historic crash data analysis, thank you for the graphic, by the way. It is a highlight of my day. Will that be, will that information, or will it be possible for that information to be split into property damage only, as well as injury-related crashes? Is that the intent of the funding, or is it only related to injuries and death?
Could you slow down the question? Because, so remember, the local road safety plan is, we have all the crash data, and we've been waiting for the updated 2022 data. So that's in November. We'll provide you the updated data. But we've been working on it, and the local road safety plan was basically the trends that we've seen in the city. But yes, we can have read the data.
Okay. Yeah, the question I had was really about the types of crashes that we're focusing on. Is it injury-related, or death-related, or all crashes?
Always local road safety plan. We've been focused on deaths and serious injuries.
Okay. And will there be an opportunity to look at property damage costs at all?
Yes. So the goal with the action plan is looking at all.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you.
Council President Forsyth.
Thank you. So Attachment C doesn't, isn't working for me in the packet or in the individual, so it just says downloaded Acrobat. So if we could get that sent out separately, that would be helpful.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
That's great. And then, so the community outreach portion, could you just go into talking about, a little bit about that? Because it talked a lot about the community outreach needs for the topic, and it, this seems, from my novice understanding, that this is an area where we would just use best practices and less rely on community outreach. So can you just give me a quick little rundown of what that might look like?
It is interesting that you ask that question, because part of the request for qualifications with the consultants is how we can build on the expertise of our outreach team. And one of the questions that we had in our interviews is, what does equity mean to them and how they can help us? So we wanted to hear from the consulting teams how they can build on the routes-to-rails work that we did. We have a lot of good data that we've heard from our surveys, and so what we want now is an action plan that builds on what we've heard from people in the community, what they want to see, and building on the data that we have, and that is very Redmond-specific. So that's what we want. And you will hear more once we, we have chosen a consultant, but it's not public knowledge yet, so.
So this is a lot more of distilling the information we've already been collecting.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Fields.
So Councilwoman Stewart, I think, was asking this question. What, how will we mirror some of the other jurisdictions that are also getting these grants? What, and there's two parts, or two sides to that question. How will we mirror, and what will we do differently, or above and beyond what is expected? And third part to that question is, can we do more than the $40,000 grant, match funding?
$40,000 was the requirement, so.
Minimum requirement?
Yes.
Okay.
And so that's just part of the grant, and so we can always do more. Councilmember Fields, this, the conversation today is how we can accept the grant. So, so the answer to your question is yes, we can always do more.
And then the first part of the question, will we, I guess that, that, the second, or the first two questions I asked are yet to come, and that is, how will our scope mirror or differ from other jurisdictions? You're going to bring that?
Yes. So the SS4A grant has very specific things that we need to do in order to apply for an implementation grant. And all the applicants, the consultant teams that applied know that we have to do that in order to apply for an implementation grant. So we will go over that.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Any other questions from the Council? Any objection to seeing this item on consent on September 19? Okay, looks like we'll have it then. Thank you so much, Ms. Garcia.
Thank you.
The third item on our agenda tonight is the Redmond Community Van Agreement, also with Ms. Garcia and Linnea Taylor.
Okay. Well, it's me again. This is an interlocal agreement with the City of Redmond and King County Metro for the Community Van Pilot Program. There is no fiscal impact on the city, but this is an interlocal between two agencies. Council approval is required under our contracting policies. The program has been implemented in other King County cities, including, such as Kirkland, Simamish, and Bothell. This pilot program has been brought to the city by King County Metro, where they will administer most of the program obligations and responsibilities. This agreement allows community van within city limits. Linnea Taylor is here to provide more details on the program.
Good evening. So Community Van, like Vanji had mentioned, it's a pilot program and part of King County Metro's flexible services programming. The program would provide Redmond with vans for Redmond community members to use for pre-scheduled trips as both driver and/or passenger. Community van trips would cost the same as a normal regular transit route, so $2.75, a dollar for Orca Lift cardholders and seniors, and then youth would ride for free. Like Vanji also said, no monetary exchange between the city and Metro for this program. And as part of Redmond's unique contract with Metro, Metro is going to be subcontracting with Hope Link to act as our community transportation coordinator. This means that Hope Link will do all outreach, recruiting of drivers and riders and events, outreach events that are related to community van. Metro provides us with the vans. They pay for gas and vehicle maintenance, and then would perform the background screening on volunteer drivers before they operate the vans. Pre-scheduled trips can be anywhere within a two-hour drive of Redmond and can occur any time of day, any day of the week, as long as there is a volunteer driver and at least two passengers present. This pilot would begin in the fall and go through December 31 of 2027. So TPNE staff, me, along with Hope Link, Metro, will meet several times throughout the year to discuss data, make any adjustments if necessary. And this pilot helps provide a transportation option for community members that aren't currently served by Metro's fixed routes. Some conversations that have come up already are maybe an option to community events where parking is limited. We've heard that there are folks that would like to attend Saturday Market, but since transit isn't great on Willows, especially on the weekends, that could be a case. And then, of course, airport rides always come up, so those are some identified ways that we see folks being able to utilize this. So I'm looking for approval for this item to go on the consent agenda on September 19, and I'm open for any questions, if you have any.
Thank you so much, Ms. Taylor. Could you restate the end date of the pilot?
December 31, 2027.
That's what I thought you said. Okay. Thanks.
Yes.
All right. Questions from the Council? Council President Forsyth, Council Vice President Kritzer?
A couple of questions. One is, just in terms of, you mentioned about people paying Metro. Is it that they, will they reserve, be in an online system connected to their accounts, or is there actually going to be in the van some sort of tap to pay situation?
There's an actual tap-to-pay or transit-go ticket. Yeah.
Great. And then, for Hope Link, I'm curious, just how did we come to having them as the organizer, provider for the community transportation coordinator, and just because of their expertise in volunteer management?
Yeah, so they are already doing, I believe it's the Both, let me see here, Deval, Carnation, and Bothell-Woodenville. Hope Link is already managing those contracts as the community transportation coordinator for them. So Metro works with them a lot, and that was just something that, you know, Metro brought to the table, and we thought, yes, they, they get it. They know.
And the one, so there'll be one staff member that kind of manages the volunteers, but then all the drivers will actually just be volunteer, not paid?
Right. All, all drivers are volunteer.
Something that the city, cities have the option to have a staff person on staff to do it. We just thought it was easier, since we already have the relationship with Hope Link and use, I mean, it's already working for other cities, so it just seemed easier.
Great. And I guess, last question is, I'm super excited about this. I know we've been talking for a while about offering more flexible transportation options, and I've seen other cities get this program. So I think this will be a good first test for us, as we look at different flex transit options. One question is, do you think we could have, once we launch it, could we, at one of our, our business meetings, be able to have a staff report where we could just have like a, you know, walkthrough for the community of like, if you want to use community transit, like, here's how to use it, like a little, I don't know, I don't know if there's any sort of, if you have like a PowerPoint or something that would show what like a typical process would look like, or path, just because, I think this is such a cool thing, but thinking about like, what are the ways in which we could really get it out? Or maybe it's not even at one of our council meetings. It's just being able to get out a video or something else like that. I don't know. Probably already have those resources.
Yeah, there's a lot of how-to guides, and so, yeah, I was, I was looking even as early as today, so absolutely, we could get something like that.
Yeah, I think it'd be great to use all our channels to visibilize it.
Agreed.
Thank you. Yeah, similar question about making sure community knows about it. I know Kirkland has it, and they kind of pitch it as a go-on-a-hike, but the example you did of Saturday Market, maybe getting people across town, or people from the ages living community, that was, I think, a much more compelling reason for me. So I love that example. So it's a four-year pilot, which seems long, which I think you probably gathered from some reactions. What kind of data are you hoping to collect? What, what does that look like? Is that the average amount of time for a pilot? Tell us more.
I think that the, the time that they're giving is because all of the other pilots are around in that time right now, and I think COVID really put a delay on those pilots. So I think that that data is flexible. There's also in the contract, as long as we have something going for a couple of years, if we decide, you know what, this doesn't work for us, we can also have the option of getting out. There isn't this four-year commitment, but that is how long they're willing to let it go. As far as data and things, the reports that I've seen are definitely about location of where riders are, destinations, all of those sort of things. So I think for us, the big focus in the beginning is going to be the education, letting people know it exists. This is kind of a unique, you know, thing that hasn't existed here before. So just letting people know that it exists. So trying to, you know, keep the expect, like, we're excited, but there is a process of letting people know about it, recruiting drivers, recruiting riders, making those connections. So really hoping to lean in on Hope Link's expertise there.
And then, do we have any thoughts on if, like, businesses maybe, say, take too much advantage of it, becomes very successful, and they start relying on it more than their own means of transportation?
Actually, we've been waiting a while to have this program in the city. The city of Kirkland, our Kirkland friends have said that it's actually getting riders to learn about it and to use it more has been their challenge. The riders, I mean, the drivers, it was, hasn't been as big of a problem. And so that's why we immediately partnered with, with Hope Link and to build on our partnership with Hope Link and to, you know, get, move Redmond has been, has been already getting the word out. So we've been trying to work ahead and being proactive of just building up the anticipation. We already worked with our senior advisory people, so just getting people using it.
Thanks. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I love this program. I'm curious if you can tell us a little bit about how this might help us with some of our first-mile, last-mile service goals, and what that might look like for light rail stations coming in as well, if that's going to be part of the program.
The key, the difference is here is that it's pre-scheduled. So one thing that we've been anticipating is, in Kirkland, there was a preschool that's moving from Kirkland to Redmond, and so that they were one of the highest active users for the community van. So, I mean, this is a very, if you know you're scheduled something that's a regular trip, this is an amazing solution for first, last mile, because you can, what Linnea said, it can be anything in two-hour window, or, so it can fit a lot if it's pre-scheduled. What it doesn't quite help is the unscheduled trips.
That sounds good. Thank you. I guess there's an interest from me personally, and probably from the rest of Council as well, since this is one of our climate goals, in our transportation plan goals as well, is that there's a way to keep track of what that looks like, especially for some of those high-volume users. So, thank you.
Any other questions from the Council? Councilmember Fields.
Just a quick clarification on the Hope Link. So Hope Link is being hired by King County, and they had all, so what does that have to do with us as decision-makers about that? Do, did we just say okay, or did we, do we have to agree to that, or? It almost sounds like that was in us signing an agreement with King County that's already predetermined. Is that true?
Not necessarily. We could have taken the option to have it in-house and had an FTE and gone through the, but I think with, like Vanji mentioned, we've been so excited to have this come on, that this just seemed like a quicker, honestly, probably better way to go about it.
And that was our two choices, either whatever King County wants to do, or we...
Figure it out ourselves.
Correct. Okay. Perfect. Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Kritzer.
Just one quick follow-up question on the pre-scheduling. How far in advance will residents have to pre-schedule? Like, how many?
So I think at minimum, 24 hours is what everything online is saying. I do think that there's some flexibility once we get the community transit, like, coordinator working, and they kind of figure out their rhythm with everyone, and especially maybe if it's reoccurring. I could see it being something that's scheduled out, or, but that's, 24 hours is what they start with.
Cool. Thanks. And I have a question about when we can expect to see you again with an update of this very, in the, hopefully, we don't have to wait till the end of 2027 for how's it going chat.
Let's get started first.
So would you say like, six months, a year? What's your guess?
Six months sounds like a good.
Six months sounds nice.
Okay. Cool. Awesome. We'll see you then. Are there any other questions from the Council? Any objection to sending this to consent on September the 19th? Awesome. Looks like we'll have it for us. Thanks so much. Really appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to the public work section of the evening. Item number four is approval of a consultant agreement in the amount of $256,685 for the design of West Lake-Simamish Parkway Pavement Preservation Project, and approval of revenue from the Puget Sound Regional Council in the amount of $1,436,000. This item is also under consideration for consent on September the 19th. And it looks like introducing this item, we have Deputy Director Chris Stenger. Welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember, and good afternoon, Council. Before you, I present the West Lake-Simamish Parkway Consultant Pavement Preservation Agreement. Give a little bit of background on this. The project limits are just north of Merrymore Park to Leary Corridor. Paving will match up to the south side of Leary Way, where recent paving work had been completed with programmatic functions from the pavement preservation program. It'll stop a little bit short of Merrymore Park entrance with available funding, and that's because the intersection of Leary Way was addressed with our pavement preservation program work, because the pavement condition index was a little too low to hit that grant funding. So the total project is $3267,700. Puget Sound Regional Council Federal Grant will provide $1,436,000, and the city funding transportation, CIP, is $1,831,700. The consultant needed for the services, we advertised the RFP twice, once in May and once in June. We didn't have any, enough participation for May, so this is why it's coming in in June, and then we had to advertise. So this group that has, consultant that has been agreed upon is David Evans and Associates for $256,685, and then the current construction cost estimate is $2,107,498. So the construction will start in the summer of 2024, and we look to have this as consent September 19, 2023. And I do have some SMEs on the line for any project specifics or consultant specifics.
Thank you. We look forward to hearing from them. Council President Forsyth.
The memo references property easements. Are any of those property easements private property, or is it county and city combined?
Adnan, do you have any answers on the easements?
Currently, the initial scope, my name is Adnan Shabir. I'm the functional lead on this project. Currently, the, the scope actually does not include any property acquisition. So, yeah, the consultant agreement is specifically for design without the right-of-way acquisition. If it's, if it's needed, if we go further into design, 30% design, if it's needed, then we want to ensure that it's included in the council process right now.
Will you come back to us and let us know if there are easements that need to be made?
Yeah, that will be part of the, before the construction contract will come to Council, we'll have that at that point. Will be the next touch point.
Great. And then, is any of this within sound transit scope of what they need to repair from some of the work that's been done in that area, or is this completely separate?
Yeah, we have looked at the scope for sound transit. They don't have any anticipated paving on, over their lines.
Thank you.
Other questions from the Council? Thank you, Mr. Shabir.
No problem.
Any other questions from the Council? Councilmember Fields.
Just a quick question. You said there were no bidders in May. How many bidders did you have? Was it June?
We had one consultant in May, put in a RFQ, and then in June, we had two, put in RFQ. And we think it's because the high DBE goals that are dictated by Washington State DOT that consultants are a little wary of bidding on the projects.
So is that a recurring concern, or will it likely be a recurring issue as we do other projects? Is that something we need to think about?
We have let Washington State DOT know that the high goals are causing issues for consultants to apply, especially on, you know, not complex scope projects as is these. So we have let them know, but we'll keep an eye on, on that as we have additional projects that we go into design, and we talk with Washington State DOT on the DBE goals.
And do you think that that, those factors are, are impacting the cost of the bid or the, the level of the, the level of the bid? Is it, or does this look consistent with what you would have seen historically?
Yeah, this specific bid is pretty consistent with this type of project and scope.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Critzer.
Can you clarify what you mean by the DBE goals?
Yeah, the DBE goals for, are set by State Department of Transportation for any projects that have federal funding on them. So that's disadvantaged business enterprise. So it encourages businesses that have minority employees to, to encourage them to bid on projects, federal, with federal grants. And this specific project had a 20, or 20% goal, so that was specific to a design. So 20% of the design has to be done by a DBE firm business, which is a good goal to have. I just, what we're hearing from our, from our consultant partners is that, that's difficult for them to achieve once scopes of work that are not complex enough.
Understood. I thought that's what you meant with that acronym, but I just wanted to clarify because I do think that overall that's a good thing, even if it means that maybe it's a little bit harder that we're getting folks that are putting in bids, being able to work with diverse businesses.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Are there other questions from the council? I do want to acknowledge that this is kind of two asks in one. So we've got both the consultant agreement and the approval of the, the money coming through PSRC. So are there concerns with sending either piece of this to the consent on September the 19th? Looks like we'll have that on the 19th, Deputy Director. Thanks so much. Appreciate that. Are you sticking around for item number five? Okay, item number five is acceptance of the 2023-2025 Stormwater Capacity Grant up for consideration on consent on October 3rd.
Thank you, councilmember. Before you, you have the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or NPDES, capacity grant provided by the Department of Ecology. Redmond has been offered this grant in the amount of $130,000 from the Department of Ecology. The grant becomes available approximately every two years. There is no match requirement. Funding source is the state legislature appropriation tied to the Department of Ecology operating budget. The purpose of the grant is to support implementation of our municipal stormwater systems, or NPDS, stormwater permit programs. Monies cannot be used for any capital projects. Previous uses of the grant money have been in the form of purchase of equipment to support maintenance or operation of our city-owned stormwater systems. Examples, push cameras or the catch basin flail mower systems, staff training, education and outreach that comes in the forms of materials and consultant support, software subscriptions, adopt a drain annual subscription. And we plan to use the grant for the same general uses that support implementation of the city's NPDES permit. Early ideas come in the form of the Continuous Monitoring Adaptive Control System subscription, adopted drain subscription, push camera for private drainage inspection program. And then right now, we're waiting for the Department of Ecology to provide the draft, which we expect in mid-October. And then, once we receive that draft, we'll get a date to, to put on consent agenda. But we want to get ahead because time is of the essence. And pending any further questions, I'm standing by to answer.
So, sorry, just to clarify, Deputy Director, you're not asking for this item on consent on October 3rd?
Not on October 3rd yet. I think historically it's been mid-October that they actually received the, the draft from the, the Ecology and then we can present that.
Okay, so council will have a, a chance to review that prior to seeing.
Correct. Correct. We will ensure that you get.
Council President Forsyth.
And just to be clear, we were already counting on $50,000. So now we're counting on an additional $80,000 to add to the budget.
I would have to look into the original 50, 50 on there. What was presented to me was 100, 130 total for the upcoming.
I was just clarifying. In the memo, it says 50 was already included in the budget and then we'll do a budget adjustment for 80. So it sounds like we were planning for some money, we're just getting more than we'd hoped.
More than we hoped, it sounded like from them.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Vice President Critzer.
Just want to say thanks to the staff for working on this. Always great to be able to take advantage of a, of a non-match required state grant. So very exciting on this. And, and just to say that I, I feel like I've, I've heard from residents, a lot of enthusiasm about the, what we funded with the last grant, especially with the adopted drain program. So thanks for all the hard work on this and looking forward to moving this forward.
Councilmember Fields.
Are there any constraints? So you'd planned to spend 50 and we've always, we've often heard, I should say, scratch that word always, we've often heard about personnel constraints on doing things. And we also have heard often that, you know, we, we line up all these projects, we line up all these things and it's difficult to make changes, scope adds or scope deletions. And I also noticed that we have until first quarter 2025 to spend the entire amount of money. So theoretically, the 80,000, if, if it's difficult to spend in the first, well, in the biennium that we're in, you, we could actually spend the 80,000 in the next biennium budget. So lots of questions in there, but do you anticipate any challenges or constraints or parameters around staffing, your Redmond staffing or getting this work done?
Not at the moment, councilmember. I know that on these Continuous Monitoring Adaptive Control and some of these subscriptions are, I believe, like 10 to 20,000 for, for an annual subscription that, and on the Monticello watershed, these systems take the outdated or older technology on the stormwater retention and kind of monitors and balances that on there. And as well as there are some of the stormwater team's equipment that would, you know, vectors and mowers and whatnot that they could use this money on, as well as, you know, some consultants or services. I don't foresee any issues on, on getting that spent or getting the right spend for the program.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions from the council?
Okay, well, I won't ask if there's consent on this one going to consent because we're going to need a few more details, but thanks so much for filling us in today. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. And once I get those details, I will forward them on.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Deputy Director. We are now moving on to our discussion and informational item with Public Works Director Erin Burt. This is our 2023 Q2 Capital Projects Update. Welcome, Director Burt.
Thank you. It's great to see everybody. Before I get into the update, I do want to introduce, this is Ryland Newton, I always mess up your last name, who's our new capital division manager. Ryland comes to us from King County. Super excited that he's on board. Let's see, I think you're in week six. He's still here, which is good, getting a handle of the issues as I think we discussed previously. John Spangler, previous capital division manager, has moved into the role of the city engineer for the city, which is back and forth at times has been separate, other times had been combined with the deputy director position. But with John's great experience and almost 30 years of service here at the city, we, we felt that him moving into that role of the defined city engineer position would be best for him. And so he's transitioning into that. And with Ryland on board, he's getting a handle on staffing, projects, processes, procedures. And the, of course, the big thing right now that we're looking at is the Maintenance and Operations Center as one of the big projects on board. Also, you know, not to mention the 76 projects that we have on the CIP, either continuing from last biennium or projects that we've started this year. So with that, turning it over to you for any other comments that you'd like to, like to state.
Just appreciate being here with, with Redmond and looking forward to working with all of you and, you know, looking forward to answering your questions as they come up and providing the support from the capital division through the public works director to all of you and mayor. Thank you.
And fortunately for the council, going forward, Ryland will be handling these updates. So you won't have to listen to me talk, which is great across the board. So with that, this is a Q2 Capital Investment Program update. We did not do a quarter one because quarter one essentially, when we start up a new biennium, it's just mostly focused on carryover projects, which were not in construction season, and then also taking us into the initial scope, design and development of our projects. So moving forward, a quick look at the 23-24 portfolio status. We do have 76 projects that we will be working on in this biennium. We're targeting 50 for completion and a big portion of that is some of those projects are programmatic that carry over from year to year or some of our long-term projects that take longer than two years to be filled within the biennium. To date, we have completed six projects within this biennium. I would say in 2023, we're anticipating closing out or finishing, taking to the end of construction, 23 projects. And then in 2024, we're looking at 27 projects. Projects that will be completed here in 2023, for example, is the 156 Second Avenue Northeast Improvements from 24th Street to 28th. We're finally getting in and getting after the 90th Street Pond, major maintenance project, put in a new liner. We continue on our ADA improvements. We'll be finishing the 156 Avenue Cycle Track, which is great. We're working on a hardscape project for parks. We're tearing out a sports court demo. And then next year in 2024, we'll be rebuilding that sports court on top of our reservoir. And so across the board, it's the continuation of the lift station replacements, major maintenance updates. We did finish out, for example, the plumbing improvements and ADA improvements out at the MOC, which in probably three, four years will be taken out, but it was needed for the staff in the interim period. We've done some security improvements out there as well, dealing with gate access. And then, you know, one of the big ones that we'll count as a closeout and a win here in 2023 is the pedestrian and bicycle bridge at the Redmond Technology Station that we look forward to beginning to use, actually both the bridges that cross 520. Moving into just a little bit of details on some of our projects, this is a good one, a rebuild of 152nd Avenue Northeast in the Overlake area. It's a rebuild of intersections, wider sidewalks, creating some amenity zones, putting in the cycle track and then also repaving that whole street to improve the asphalt pavement grade to match the profile across the whole street because it had been a little cattywampus previously. You know, one of the issues though, that I'll talk about towards the, the end of the presentation, is some of these major end items that we're looking at. We are having somewhat of a procurement process, not that we haven't been able to order and pay for them, but the lead time on some of these larger items are, are still dragging beyond kind of the, the timelines that we originally wanted. But this is going to be a good project. You know, it's the city making an investment in an area that we're looking to build out that will spark further growth down the road. Favorite project here that just continues to move along is the Pressure Reducing Valve Replacement Program. I believe in this biennium, we'll be hitting three to four more, which will take us close to the end of that project as a whole. One of the struggles though, that we do continue to find, and it's given us an opportunity to work internally to approve our GIS documentation, is every time you open up the ground, it's a, it's a treasure chest. You don't know what you're going to find in terms of pipes or things that are supposed to be there on a map or not, and something else is there in, in its place. One of our most recent ones that we found, we were digging underground on PRV 40 and the, the contracting crew basically found a rogue pipe. And we specifically went out there and said, do not connect anything to that pipe. We don't know where it goes. The contractor did so and it ended up flooding out a condominium near the project. Well, lesson learned for that contractor and also lesson learned for everybody, don't connect to a pipe when we say don't connect until we know where it goes. Now fortunately, in this case, obviously the contractor covered that cost, but it's a reminder for us at the city to ensure, you know, a big portion of this, after we do a project underground, is ensuring that our documentation, our final plans are accurate and that we load that information into GIS so we have it going forward so we don't make these mistakes. So that was fun. We're continuing moving forward with the electrical vehicle charging station. We've talked about this quite a bit. We know this is a priority for the council. It's a priority for Public Works and our Fleet Division as well. The baseline infrastructure and plan is ready to go in place over there at City Hall Garage. The problem is right now is it's the lengthy lead time for the switchgear and which we're looking at probably about another year out for that. But in a way that does give us a little bit of a benefit because Puget Sound Energy is still lagging behind their ability to come out and place the infrastructure in place for these types of projects. So we're ready to go once we get the equipment. We're just waiting for Puget Sound Energy and the equipment to arrive for this project. But this will tie in very nicely. You know, we continue with our Fleet Study, which has part of that is dealing with the electrification plan moving forward. So we have that Fleet Study done here at the end of the year, which then helps further inform our capital improvement and major, major, major maintenance investments in our electrification moving forward in the next biennium.
Can I ask you a question at this point?
About the last bullet?
Yes.
Director Burt, could you explain the last bullet on that last slide?
Not explain, have a question.
Oh, sorry. Can we hold questions for the end?
It's, what'd you say? It's specific to this slide. Thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Fields.
Thank you. So is there a lesson that we need to document on electrification needs for the future? In other words, you know, these things are happening because we didn't foresee this need and we could have built some level of infrastructure in the past and made all of this faster and quicker. Are we, are we documenting that for other areas in the city or projects that are coming up?
Yes. I'll address this point, this last bullet point, it actually probably should not have been in this slide deck and I missed it. Essentially what it's referring to is that the charge point units, like you see in the picture there, we were able to get those, those were able to be ordered. So we have that capacity. What we don't have is the switching gear that allows for the electrification of those charge points. This point is just referring that because of the disrupted supply chain dealing with anything on electrification, we put in the order for the charge points and the switchgear at the same time. The charge points showed up and the switchgear has not. That's the long lead time. So with the charge points, we had to find a way, because I think we have like 40 or 50 of them, we had to find a place to store them. They were talking about storing them out at the MOC on that. But to your other point, Councilmember Fields, yes, this was the first large-scale electrification project that Public Works had taken on. And we have learned some lessons as it relates to sequencing and phasing, ordering of equipment and what kind of pre-work we need to do beforehand in order to try to match up. But the supply chain issue really caused a lot of consternation and, and we couldn't really expect that it would take so long to get our switching gear, much like the same problem that we had with the Senior Center getting the switchgear for that. But it, it's definitely something that we'll be looking at. And then one final aspect to your question that I think you mentioned is going forward, right? So everything that we're doing, like when we're looking at any project that would have the potential of the potential of being able to put in electrical infrastructure, we're planning for the expanded growth of that footprint, so we'll put the upfront investment into that infrastructure now, for example, at the MOC, depending on what comes down the pipeline.
That's the heart of the question, but thank you.
You bet. Redmond Central Connector, looking forward to this project really coming into fruition and construction in 2024. Puget Sound Energy, right now, part of this project, they're relocating some of their power poles, they're working on that, they're a little bit behind schedule, but we don't necessarily anticipate a major concern with that work. The thing that we're looking at is the permitting issue and gaining some, well, the city annexation of a couple parcels north of 124th that will require some council action that will be coming later, I think in the fourth quarter. Our big timeframe on this is that we have dollars, federal grant dollars, that are in play on this, and we need to be moving forward with this project before June of 2024, we risk losing $2.13 million. And I am confident that we will hit that time period and not lose that critical money, or this project won't get built, so. More to follow on that, and we'll keep you posted as that one moves forward. So across the board, though, a little bit about the industry overview. So we are still seeing labor costs and major equipment costs that are continuing to rise, but on the converse, with the construction in this region, obviously with the higher interest rates, some aspects of inflation, construction is slowing down, and on some of our projects, the question was asked about the bidders on the paving project earlier, we are starting to see some more interest in the projects that we're putting out for bid, where previously we were getting one to two bids, now we're getting, you know, four to five, six contractors, at least expressing interest, and then submitting bids around the three or four, which for us at the city of Redmond, at the scale and scope of many of our projects, if we can get three bidders, I consider that a win, because that usually does give you a full range of bids across the spectrum. Industry costs, though, you know, we're talking about material costs and the supply chain, it is continuing to flatten. Obviously, the material costs are higher than they were before COVID, and it's kind of the new normal, but we are not seeing a larger growth in those material costs. And then for some reason, plumbing supplies have recovered, and we found that, because what do we do, Public Works, we deal a lot with pipes and, you know, valves and so forth, and we are seeing across the board that plumbing costs are coming down into a more realistic basis, which is good, that will eventually save us money in the long term. Couple things that will be coming to council over the course of the next couple months before the end of the year, dealing with the reservoir park tank repair. So we had a project, I mentioned earlier, about the sports court that was going in, but what we needed to do was decouple these two projects, because originally the tank repair was going to be incorporated with the sports court, but based on the nature of the repair of the tank, which isn't anything major, it's basically routine maintenance and repair, we needed to decouple because of the timelines on those projects. We have the Motley Zoo Building, which is a new project, which is downtown. The intent is to demolish that building and to get it prepared for a site, that planning is taking the lead on putting out an RFP for building of low-income or moderate-income housing, which Carol and her company will have a little bit more information on for you. Additionally, Fire Station 17 has had a longstanding issue out there with its siting and water intrusion, and it's gotten to a point where it's critical, where the internal structure and frame of that fire station is being damaged by water intrusion. We've done some preliminary analysis of that site, and we're probably going to be coming back looking for about $1.1 million to redo the full siting on that project, on that fire station. Considering I'm doing new siting on my house right now, and knowing the costs on that, that's probably about a good estimate for the fire station across the whole. And then finally, one thing that we are going to be taking a look at is the Overlake Regional Storm Water Facilities Phase 3. It's the Overlake Station Vault. It was originally targeted for 2024 completion. We are moving it out to 2025 due to some design issues, but we'll be coming back looking for an adjustment on that project, because it's on this year's biennium. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so we have several projects, you know, or right there on the boundary between either Redmond and Bellevue or Redmond and Kirkland that we've engaged in joint use agreements. This is a transfer switch project that we owe money, basically, on this project, as Bellevue's taking the lead for the implementation on that. So more information to follow on these. We'll come back to council with full-on CIP project sheets and all the defining information on cost allocation and projected timelines for completion. We will have some project acceptance coming your way for projects that we've completed or have completed here in 2023, and here's just a quick list. We've all seen these projects before, and this is just that formal council acceptance process moving forward. And with that, that's the end of our quick presentation. Our intent is to get you some updated budget numbers as well relating to these projects, and I'm sorry that that wasn't included in this project, but with the transition to D365, we're still working through some of those issues as it relates to how we're accounting for dollars and pulling those reports, but I'll be able to send that as a separate report once we get that, get those numbers updated for you. Pending your questions.
Thank you so much. I do want to acknowledge that we are at time. Is there interest in extending the meeting by five minutes to get a round of questions in? I see enough questions around the table, so I'm going to go ahead and make that decision. Who was first? Councilmember Anderson.
Would you mind going back to the slide on the industry information? Just a question, you mentioned data centers, and I was wondering if that is impacting Redmond specifically because of data centers here, or if that's somewhere external to the city, like somewhere else in the state of Washington where we're seeing that pressure?
One second here.
Sure.
I left the meeting. Let me get back in here.
It was clearly interesting enough for you to highlight it in the slides for us, so I'm just wondering where that came from.
The direct quote from the slide is, "Data centers sucking up generators, electrical gear, and generator costs expected to rise another 15% this year."
Yes, so that statement, in some of our projects, obviously, we are seeking generators, you know, some of our backup systems for our, boy, I'm drawing a blank.
Like the senior center?
Senior center or sewerless stations, I'm sorry, it was coming to me. Large generators are difficult to get to or procure right now because of the lead time on it, and the industry feedback that we are getting, I mean, it was meant more to highlight some of these larger challenges on equipment, was the fact that the aspect of critical equipment, and there are some players out in the industry right now that can get it before we can, because they pay the premium for that equipment.
And is that a pressure from within Washington State or even in Redmond specifically, or?
What we found is being able to try to get that equipment, it's basically, you know, countrywide.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Council Vice President Kritzer. Sorry, your hand had been up earlier. Who would like to go next? Councilmember Carson, did you have a question? Councilmember Fields.
So is the senior center one of those 23 projects that will be completed in 2023?
The senior center, we anticipate to open in 2024.
Okay. And why would we be doing plumbing on the MOC if we're going to replace the entire thing?
Yeah, that's a great question, and if you had been to the MOC and seen the previous female and male restroom facilities, there you would have wanted an upgrade on those systems as well. Now, the difference is, is that, you know, we've kind of reestablished a timeline for the rebuild of the MOC, and so it's just that when that project finally got funded and completed, now we're moving on to a new phase where we're going to build a new facility. But it was extremely decrepit out there, especially for female employees.
Yeah, I never saw the female restroom, but I did in fact see.
Yeah.
The male, and yeah, I get it.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember Kritzer.
Thought of my question now. You mentioned briefly about the bike pedestrian bridges that are going to be opening. Do we have a projected date now for those being opened to the public?
So Carol Helen, Director Helen, right now is taking the lead on that with the negotiations for the transfer of those bridges. Well, two aspects, the Overlake Station Bridge, we believe we can probably get in our hands before the pedestrian technology. Do I have those right? It's confusing.
The green one we'll have first.
The green one, I like that.
The white one we won't have first.
Yes, I like that, that's easier. The green bridge, we should be able to gain control of, that's working transfer agreement with Sound Transit to get that into our hands. The white bridge will be open probably in early 2024, and it's once the West Landing is completed by Microsoft. And they're making great progress on it, and it looks like it may complete earlier than they had anticipated.
The green one could be this fall.
Yes, depending, but I'll defer to Council Director Helen on that, but last time I heard an update on that, she was making great progress on that.
Great, I just like to ask about it every time it comes up, because I'm always like, when are we going to get to actually?
Yeah, no, I drive under it every day, and I'm like, when's that going to be open? Absolutely.
Other questions from the council? I'll go ahead and hop in with a couple, and I think, just for the sake of time, I'll follow up by email on a couple of questions. I'm actually hearing a bunch from residents about the 90th Street Pond refurbishment, as it's written here, which is something that will be coming to council for action quite soon, just as we're sitting here in this meeting, clicking around, I can't find this in the current CIP or last biennium CIP, does it go by another name?
I don't believe so, Councilmember, and you probably don't see it, because it was originally funded, I think, like six or eight years ago.
Okay, I'll look back, okay.
Yes, it was originally a major maintenance project, which is still considered as such.
Okay. Thank you. I'll follow up with a couple, just, we'll add a couple of two cents on, sorry, I'm clicking around, the Overlake Regional Storm Water Facility Phase 3, that is the facility that will eventually have a park on top of it, correct?
I believe so.
So this one-year delay, does that impact the timeline of that, near that development?
I'll have to check with staff and get back to you on that.
I would be curious, that is one of the few places where Overlake is projected to get some park space.
Yep.
Other questions from the council? Awesome, I'll encourage you to send in your questions to the team if you have any more. And with that, I believe we are adjourned.
Great, thank you so much.